I'd like to go ahead and call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting to order. It is Monday, December 18, 2017. The time is 9:08. Ralph, could you lead us in that place?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Reagan.
Brother.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here. I'd like to start off, if everybody read the paper the other day, which was a good article, I think this key. We had a board meeting at the 911 Center. We discussed a little bit of the joint Delaware County and the City of Muncie on the 911. It was brought to my attention that they would like to have another letter sent to them to resend our February letter on the termination. What I would like to do now is if I could get a motion and a second, is go ahead and vote on that letter to get the approval and then have our office manager take that over and hand deliver it to the mayor's office. And not only that, I'd also like to have it John sent out certified now.
Okay, we can do that.
Do we want to, John, you want to read the letter?
Sure. Let me see if I can find it. All right, this will be a letter to the Honorable Lieutenant Tyler, Mayor, City of Muncie. Dear Mayor Tyler, this letter is being sent in light of the recent discussion during the December 13, 2017, meeting of the Delaware County Emergency Communications Center Executive Board regarding termination of the above referenced interlocal agreement. The Commissioners express their desire to resend their request to terminate the interlocal agreement in July, and this letter is further confirmation of saying. As you know, on February 6, 2017, the Delaware County Commissioners hand delivered a letter to you expressing their intent and desire to terminate the above referenced interlocal agreement as permitted in Section 15. The purpose of this letter is to reiterate the county's desire as stated during the December 13, 2017, meeting to resend this termination of the agreement. Moreover, this letter serves to confirm our agreement on certain previously raised issues, thus allowing the Delaware County Commissioners to resend their February 6, 2017 termination of the interlocal agreement and continue providing emergency dispatch services to the City of Muncie. Commissioners are committed to continuing to provide emergency communications only with the city and to the entire county. It is the hope and desire of the Commissioners that the parties continue discussing the potential reconfiguration of the board to include a representative from police and volunteer part departments. The Commissioners believe that the safe and effective communication of all emergency services is essential for public safety. The Commissioners have always had public safety as their foremost concern. Because the Emergency Communications Board has been and will continue working to address the issues previously raised, the Delaware County Commissioners are formally rescinding their February 6 letter and wish to allow the interlocal agreement to remain in place. Very truly yours, signed by the three Commissioners.
Some move.
I'll second.
Yeah, Jason Rogers, Emergency Management Director, and I'm also on the 911 Board.
And I just would like some clarification. I was out at most of those meetings. I missed the last one because I was sick. But I know that there's been discussion about whether or not EMS has a vote and Mike Ashley was appointed to that board. He's not received anything from the board that he's been officially appointed. I know back in July or August when we were all in agreement that this all needed to move forward and this all needed to be fixed, that that was, there was some discussion. So I just want, I know that, I believe that that's your position, and I'm going to reach out to Paul Singleton and ask him to make sure that that's addressed, that Mike knows that he's on that board, whether he's a voting member or not, because he's come to me and asked me about that as well.
Pursuant to the interlocal agreement, the county has two positions on there, one for the Emergency Management Director and one for the Emergency Medical Services Director. Since you hold both positions, you can't, it'll get two votes, so your designation is your second to command, Mr. Ashley serves on that board.
And they agreed.
Right.
Well, we agreed to a lot of things back then, but...
Right, right. And letters were sent that...
He asked me, he asked me about that meeting, whether he would be required to attend, and I said, "Let's find out." That's, I just wanted to clarify that, that he's not been notified that he's been placed on that board, and we will, we're going to pursue that. If that is indeed the case, and I'll bring to you what we find out or what he finds out, so we can address that.
And I know Mr. Ashley's been to all the board meetings, well, almost all the board meetings ever since. But, you know, one of the other things, we wanted the meetings moved from City Hall to the 911 Center, which that hasn't been done. So, you know, we just want to move on and continue with the City of Muncie, no doubt.
Thank you.
Anything else? Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I believe you have the original of that letter.
I have the original here. If you don't mind, can you take that over for us?
I did sign it.
Go ahead, bring it here. We'll just add that.
I can print another.
Oh, that's all right. Just run it off to the side. Okay, we'll move on to table business.
I've had the chance to look at orders 2017-28, and I think it's ready for adoption.
Okay, I can give a motion to remove that one?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Is this the second reading, John?
It is.
Have a motion to...
I'll make a motion, we adopt 2017-028.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Then Resolution Number 2017-024, leave that table.
Yes, I would like to.
Move on to approval of minutes for December 4, 2017.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll go down to 2018 Commissioners Meetings. Everybody had a chance to do this?
Yeah.
Yes, you don't like 10 o'clock.
I like the 9 o'clock, especially when you have other drivers.
I move that we adopt as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second. And John, we're good with having other than on Mondays, correct?
Yes, you are. You don't have to add the January 1st. You can establish whatever you want to.
Okay, thank you. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have a presentation to the Commissioners, Department of Family and Social Services. Mr. Evers?
Yes. Hi, good morning, and thank you for having me here today.
Is that blue light on?
The blue light is on, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for having me here this morning. Once again, my name is Ray Evers. I'm from the State of Indiana's FSSA Office of Medicaid Policy and Planning. I am the Presumptive Eligibility Manager, and today for the county of Delaware County, I'm going to be presenting one of our programs, which is the PE for inmates. Just to kind of give you some information regarding some of the counties we currently have, out of the 91 counties in the State of Indiana that have county jails, there are 81 counties that are currently signed up for our inmates for PE program. It's been growing quite a bit. Since I've been with the state for about a year and a half, we've brought on, I think, about 11 or 12 counties within the year and a half. So we're steadily reaching that 91 mark, so we're hoping to get there soon so we can have all the counties here in Indiana that are able to take advantage of this program for their county jails. And just to give a little bit of backstory for the federal law, CMS, which is the overseer for the Medicaid program, they have a law stating that Medicaid outside of inmate PE, of course, Medicaid is not an available coverage for individuals that are incarcerated. So within that timeframe, they implemented a program called HEA 1269. And what this program is, it allows individuals that are incarcerated to receive Medicaid coverage through inmate PE for any type of inpatient hospital treatment. So anything that's outpatient that would not be covered under the program, so this is strictly only for situations where an individual needs to go to the hospital for treatment and it's deemed necessary for them to have inpatient services.
My question is comparing this with, let's say, Madison County.
Okay.
Is it like a full-time person or a part-time person that could be in charge of the claims? Or I was heard, I was told that you could outsource it?
Most of the county jails I knew, I know, they do outsource it to a navigation service. I believe currently, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe currently Delaware County Jail, they do have a process for full Medicaid applications.
Correct.
And I believe they work with quality correctional care. So in that case, quality correctional care would be the individuals that would help you on one half of the administrative part. The other half of the administrative part would be any necessary reporting that the state would need, and that would be monthly reporting regarding individuals that are incarcerated that have signed up for the inmate PE program. And then the other half would be reporting, quarterly reporting, and that once again would be individuals assigned for inmate PE, but also individuals that have completed a full Medicaid application upon release. And you can stop me any time if you have any questions. Some of the questions you may have may be entered into the presentation, but if you want clarification or you have any more questions, just...
Have you ever taken this to our sheriff? Have you had any conversations within?
I haven't had any conversations. As I know prior to me taking this role, there was conversations, I believe about two years ago, with the person before me, with the county, but in that stage, at that point in time, it was kind of the early stage in the process. So there were letters and some communication going out. There were some county jails that at that time didn't elect to join the program, some that did, and I do believe at that time, I don't know the exact reason, but at that time, I do know that Delaware County wasn't interested at that moment in time.
Sure.
Well, the reason why I ask this is because I've never seen this as a Commissioner, and this is my second term.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if it had been brought to the sheriff, one of the previous sheriffs, and they decided not to do this. That's the reason why I'm asking the question. I mean, seeing something like what we really need to look into to help save the county and some dollars from a medical standpoint of our inmates.
And if you would like, because I can go through the presentation, but if there's any specific questions that, because I don't want to, you know, waste your time, won't do slides, if there's specific questions that you may have...
Well, I know Mr. Brooke had some questions. John, you had some.
I closed a number of questions. If you want to just go ahead with your presentation and just go back, that'd be, I think that'll answer a lot of my questions.
Okay.
And then as far as for the two-step process when it comes to inmate PE, it's going back to, it's for individuals that are going from jail to the hospital, and are either going back to jail or that are being released from jail, that process will be the inmate PE, and that's where the actual hospital would be in charge of processing the application for the inmate presumptive eligibility. The second process, filling out a full application, that is going to be the part that the county jail is going to be responsible for, and that's one of the things that quality correctional care, one of the things that they would actually take care of for the county jail. So they would take care of the processing of the full application. They would act as the authorized rep on the applications, or if there's any issues that comes up with the application or any questions they may have, they'll be able to contact the state and have any issues corrected, or if they have any questions, they'll be able to answer those. So they'll be able to take care of all that for the county jail. And this kind of given kind of a cycle of the inmate PE process, when an individual is incarcerated or in law enforcement custody, and they're escorted to the hospital, and they're having inpatient care or procedures, and then when they're going back to incarceration or if they're being released from, released from jail, that's kind of the life cycle of inmate PE and how it's actually applied. And then this is just kind of going back to the House of Roman Act 1269, just stating that in 2015, it went into law to where inmates were actually able to get coverage for inpatient services through the inmate PE program. All right, and this is going back to 2014, where we had hospitals that were actually able to do hospital presumptive eligibility. And along with hospital presumptive eligibility, this is where they're actually able to do the inmate PE application. So any hospital throughout the entire state of Indiana that's a qualified provider to do hospital presumptive eligibility, they'll be able to do an inmate presumptive eligibility application. So we have Ball Memorial here in Muncie, but any hospital in this area in surrounding counties that's a qualified provider to do hospital presumptive eligibility, they'll be able to do an inmate PE application. So there are instances and circumstances where an individual may be transported to a hospital outside of the county, and as long as a hospital, which majority of the hospitals in Indiana are, as long as they're qualified hospital provider for PE, then they'll be able to do that inmate PE application for the county jail. And this is just kind of going to the benefits when it comes to inmate presumptive eligibility. Once again, it's only intended for inpatient hospitalization services. So if someone is going to just the ER or they're in observation and they're not being admitted, they're just being discharged, the inmate PE would not cover that. You actually have to be admitted with a 24-hour stay in the hospital in order for inmate PE to be, to be ran and for those claims to be applied to those services. And most of this information applies to hospitals. This is just kind of giving you an overview of what their process will look like on the hospital side. Any claims, claims will be paid fee-for-service, fee-for-service delivery system, so that means you're not going to have a managed care provider. So the hospital, they know how to do that, they have systems in place where they can submit those claims through the system to the state and have those taken care of and paid for. All right, and this is going back to what I stated a moment ago. It does not cover ER, ER observation, or outpatient care. It would cover ER or ER observation if that results in an inpatient stay. So in that case, those would be covered, but once again, just circling back to outpatient services, there's, and no situation where any type of outpatient care would be covered underneath the inmate PE program. And then also for women that are pregnant or women that are in labor or ready to deliver, they would not actually have any service underneath the inmate PE program. There is a separate process, separate process that they would actually have to go through with our DFR. They have a special, our Division of Family Resources, they have a special package that they can actually include those women in, and I can get some more information surrounding that, our DFR office, they actually administer and watch over that program. So I can give some information out when I get back to the office regarding what DFR applies as far as that process. And then once again, this two-step process, presumptive eligibility application for inmates, and then the full Medicaid application, which must follow. All right, and some of this stuff is kind of repetitive. Hospitals that are in the inmate PE program, once again, they can do the PE applications, the same-day eligibility determination. So once they submit that application, that very second, the individual has inmate PE. So you don't have to wait 24 to 40 hours for a determination. You get that automatic real-time, real-time determination, and they have coverage just starting then. They have unique ID numbers that will be assigned to these individuals. So the, so once the individual has inmate PE, there's a letter that comes out, the individual has their special RID number on top of that, on top of that form. The hospitals is to keep a copy of the form, but they also should give a copy to the county jails as well for them to keep in their record so they can keep track of the individuals that have been processed for inmate PE. And then there is time-limited eligibility on that. With all of our PE programs, they can be applied for 24 hours, but midnight is the actual cutoff in order for those PE applications to be submitted. So if it's 11:58 and you have the individual that's going to the hospital, they're being admitted for inpatient, the hospital has to be, the application has to be submitted before midnight. If it's not submitted before midnight, then that stay will not be covered. So I just wanted to point that out. All right, and once again, this is stating about hospital facilities and being a qualified provider in order for them to access our portal and to do the inmate PE applications. All right, and this is focusing on the jails, and the link you see here is a link that can be accessed to find qualified providers, and those hospitals that are providers for the hospital PE program. And once again, any of these hospitals across the state that are qualified HPE, they're able to do the inmate PE applications. Stating again, prisoners that need inpatient hospital treatment exceeding 24 hours, not ER visit, not labor and delivery, they must complete the prisoner profile questionnaire. And if you opened up your pamphlet, there's an example of the questionnaire and the questions that should be presented to the hospital. And I'm sorry, it's on the back end where it says "With reference" for Sheriff's Offices. And this is the information that will need to be presented from the arresting officer or the transporting officer when they're taking the individual to the hospital. And this information is important to be completed so the hospital would be able to actually process the application. If they don't have sufficient information to process the application, the application wouldn't be able to be processed and approved. So it's important that the county jail sets up a great relationship with the hospitals, for say, Ball Memorial, to work out a process. IU Health Network, they're pretty familiar with the inmate PE process. So I've been working with another hospital there down in Indianapolis to set up a unified form for them, so they'll supply the form to all the surrounding counties for their county jails to use, so they'll make sure it's a seamless process while they're transporting individuals to the hospital, so they have all the information that's needed to process the application, so they can get that inmate PE processed as quickly as possible and get that information back to the county jail so they can do the full application. And as, going back to the full application, and I know this is one of the questions that was in the email, the full application must be completed for individuals that are going to be incarcerated for 30 days or more. If they're going to be incarcerated for less than 30 days, we don't require for you to do a full Medicaid application, but if the individual states they don't have Medicaid or they don't have any health insurance coverage, it's a good idea to submit that full Medicaid application for the individual. But once again, the law only requires for individuals that are incarcerated for 30 days or more to have that full Medicaid application completed. And prior to PE, the inmate PE program being implemented, that was a law that went in force, so all county jails in the State of Indiana today should be assisting individuals with submitting full Medicaid applications if they're incarcerated for over 30 days. So that's a process that should already be occurring today. Other important information, just retaining information, once you get that inmate, hospital does the inmate PE, you want to make sure you get a copy of that letter from the hospital to keep in your records. And just on administrative side for the county jail, and, you know, quality correctional care should assist as well, but it's making sure you have good records on the individuals that have come through, where you've done PE on, the individuals that you've done full Medicaid applications on. And then an important part of that is during the intake process, just making sure that you're asking the individual if they do have any type of health insurance coverage or if they do have current Medicaid. If they do have current Medicaid, you want to make sure that the Department of DFR, Division of Family and Resources, is contacted so we can have that full Medicaid suspended. And what that does, they'll suspend that Medicaid, so once they're incarcerated, if they do need to go to the hospital, you can do the inmate PE application, so they'll have that coverage, so you don't have to worry, at that point in time, you don't have to worry about doing a full Medicaid application. That's why it's important you keep track and you keep your documentation, keep that up to make sure you have that information on file. Now, once the individual is released from incarceration, it's actually their responsibility to contact DFR to have that full Medicaid unsuspended, so they'll have the coverage upon once they're released from incarceration. But it's always a good idea for either quality correctional care or for the county jail to kind of be proactive and reach out to the Division of Family and Resources as well to have that unsuspended for the individual, because many times, you know, you'll have individuals that are incarcerated, I mean, the first thing on their mind isn't making sure they call DFR to have their Medicaid coverage unsuspended. So, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, they have the care that they need upon being released from jail.
Usually if they're incarcerated, the responsibility is not real high up on their list.
Exactly, yeah. So that's why I said it's good to be proactive with these individuals, you know, especially when you're running into situations, you know, substance abuse issues. You want to make sure that we're giving them coverage upon that date they're released or any type of treatment or programs that they need to get into, that they have that handy. And I kind of just wanted us to go into the second part. This sheet here I gave you, this says Indiana Medicaid Substance Abuse Treatment. This, and then when I'm done, Kelly Mulgier with DMHA, she'll go into more information regarding some of our substance abuse treatment programs outside of Medicaid or Medicaid offers. But this right here just kind of goes into some of the programs that Medicaid itself offers. And if you kind of go through on the second page, it actually will show you the type of, different types of medications that are covered, and then it'll let you know what the calls start as well. But as far as for, when it comes to inmate PE, there is inpatient treatment. If someone has any type of substance abuse disorders, there is inpatient treatment as well. So once again, it wouldn't cover anything for outpatient, but if they need to be rushed to the, to the ER and they're going to have an inpatient stay due to any type of substance abuse issues, they will have coverage for that for, for inpatient services. And this here, just kind of a view of the information that I showed you in the pamphlet regarding the questions that need to be presented with the individual to the hospital in order to have the inmate PE application completed. All right, and this here is just showing again, the full Medicaid application, authorized representative with quality correctional care, they should be the ones listing themselves as the authorized representative since they're going to be the navigator completing the full Medicaid application. And once again, that just allows them to be able to contact DFR, to ask any questions pertaining to the individual's coverage or to have any issues corrected or turn in any paperwork that may be needed for that individual.
Mr. Evers?
Yes.
Could I just correct you something? The county now contracts with advanced correctional healthcare.
Is it advanced correctional?
Instead of quality. They did that in 2015, and that contract expires in December 2018.
Okay. And this link here at the bottom is also a link that gives you access to other navigator services in the State of Indiana. So you can click that link, and it lets you know which navigation services are actually licensed to the navigators. All right, and this is just stating why it's important to complete the full Medicaid application. First of all, I mean, it's a required step with the law of the State of Indiana, and only those fully, individuals that are fully determined, and this is for individuals that are new to Medicaid. So if anyone has their full Medicaid application suspended, this part right here wouldn't apply. But only those individuals that are newly signed up for Medicaid, they'll be eligible to get the enhanced match rates, and I'll go into them in a second. And I'll go into that on the second slide. And, uh, completing the application will lower the cost. All right, and then it's going into, uh, match rates and the actual cost that the, uh, the county could see. The state will cover, um, through federal funds, the state will cover 67% of any, uh, claims for the M A P E program. The state, um, the state, well, I'm sorry, 67% of federal funds are used for the M A P E program. The state will cover 33% of that. And here at the bottom, you'll see that in 2017, the, um, newly enrolled individuals, this is individuals that are new to Medicaid. If they get M A P E and if they submit their full application and this determine, determined that they're, um, approved and eligible for Medicaid. The, um, claims on that will be covered at 100%, so there'll be no state dollars used. And that was, uh, just recent, that's 2017. In 2020, um, that's going to change to 90/10. So there'll be 90% of federal funds that'll be used to, uh, pay claims in the M A, uh, P E program. And, uh, 10% will be, um, paid by the state.
And that would be the Medicaid or Medicare rate as opposed to the regular retail rate that they would charge on the bill?
That is correct.
That's a significant part because the Medicare Medicaid rate is substantially less than what the regular amount is.
But also, uh, along with that, um, with that 33%, we call it the, uh, the state match. So that 33% will be the part that the county would reimburse the state for. So any inpatient, um, any inpatient claims that come through on the M A P E program that are, uh, that are approved and paid for by the state. The county will be, uh, responsible for 33% of that. But if the individual submits that, if they submit their full Medicaid application on the individual and they're determined to be, uh, approved for Medicaid. Uh, once the hospital submits the claim on that, if that application's been submitted and approved, then it would be 0%. So the county, the state and county, uh, the county wouldn't pay, uh, anything on that. And then if you go to the other sheet that I gave you that showed the counties, and this is just a handful of counties that I've just kind of grabbed. To kind of, um, show you, I know Madison is a neighboring county here, so I wanted to include them in there as well. And these are just claims that are actually been submitted and paid, um, since January 1st of this year. And this is today, this was as recent as last Friday when I pulled these, uh, this information out. So if you look at the total, total claims paid, so looking at Madison County there. The state share, the column in the blue, is what the actual, what the state actually paid. And if you look on the far right, the 72,000% is, um, the money that the county, that the county saved. So Madison County paid about $36,000 out of that 108,000. So 72,155 is the, um, amount that Madison County saved, uh, from January 1st up until, um, last Friday when I ran this report. So, and if you look at some of the other counties, I mean, there's this substantial amount of money, um, that's being saved with this program. Um, I know typically when you look at it, inpatient hospital stays, those can be really pricey. So, um, you know, rather than paying 100% of those, um, I think 33% is a, is a big savings, um, to, to any county for this program.
If the county doesn't do this, who pays those hospital bills?
Um, the, the county will be responsible for that. So at that point in time, the state, you know, wouldn't be involved.
Right.
So if you're transporting individuals to the hospital, of course, the hospitals wouldn't want to bill someone for that. So the hospitals want to bill the county, they're going to bill the county jail.
That's going to be the county's responsibility 100% at, at the hospital rate as opposed to Medicaid or Medicare rate.
Right, that'd be the hospital rate. And, you know, the hospital may be able to work some type of a percentage out that's paid. I'm not sure how that, how that typically works, but if the hospital says 100%, um, you need to pay 100% on that. That's the amount that we bill for.
And that's really the crux of this whole program is that we do have inmates that go to the hospital and need treatment and overnight treatment. And the county ends up paying the full cost of that, of that care as opposed to this program, which has been around since 2015. Which would, we would pay a third of, of a much less amount.
And once again, there would be those instances if that full Medicaid application is completed, it should pay nothing. So, I mean, majority of the times, you know, depending on when the individual is transported to the hospital, when the hospital submits the claims on that. It could be 30, 33%, but once again, I mean, you're looking at a big savings compared to paying that full amount.
They do have to stay there 24 hours and, and that happens, I mean.
I believe we have inmates that, uh, out there.
Well, I'm sure that, I just wanted to be.
Right.
But how, and of course, I guess when we send Randolph County, I believe, or sending some, Randolph County picks us up then. And they're then, actually they're prisoners, we pay the $35 a day.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
When we outsource our prisoners to Randolph County, they pick that. That's their responsibility.
They will, um, and that may be something that, I'm, I'm not sure from, from county to county, how they have it contracted out. Because we do the same thing with, um, the Department of Corrections individuals. Some of those individuals are housed in county jails.
Right.
So the county jail would be responsible for paying that, but I believe on the back end, the county jail bills, uh, I D L C for, uh, those charges for the individuals that are housed in there.
You know, I really don't know.
We're going to end up paying for it anyway. But if, if, if our, if our inmates are going up to Blackford County, did we get several in Blackford County? Then we pay them the $35 a day plus whatever expenses are.
So it is, okay, so it is plus.
We just need to make sure they're enrolled before they.
Right.
Before we ship them out.
Right. And how is this with hope with, uh, community corrections, are these clients not eligible for them?
Well, it depends on if they're on Medicaid, um, we're talking about the, the people that come to the jail in the process of the jail. At some point, they'll be, they'll go to community corrections, but they may or may not be on Medicaid at that point.
But if they're with community corrections, they're out of the jail, so they should be paying for their medical anyway.
Right.
And then what I found. About the ones that's actually incarcerated in the jail.
Right.
And what I found with a lot of the community correction, when they're like a work release, um, or kind of residential, um, situation. A lot of times they require for the individual to seek their own medical care, so the individual's responsible for applying for Medicaid on their own. Uh, the individual, especially when they're working and they're, you know, they're making a little bit of money, they're responsible for, uh, a lot of those day of living expenses anyway. So they kind of, um, hold that individual responsible for applying for their own Medicaid coverage.
Mr. Brook, look at your answers.
Yes, there, there were a lot of questions, and, and that's why I thought the presentation would, would answer a lot of those questions, that's what they told me, so. I do appreciate Mr. Revers going through this.
And this is just going on to the next step on how to participate. Uh, we have a dedicated e- email box set up for any type of, uh, inmate, uh, inmate questions. It can be for full Medicaid application questions. It can be, you know, if the county wants to participate, they shoot the email to that email address stating their interest to, um, to join the program. I can get the information over to our, um, contract management department and they can, um, get that information logged in. And they'll, uh, communicate to the counties, um, regarding the next step, so we can get that process rolling.
I have, actually, I have received a draft copy of the contract, that's where a lot of my questions came from.
Yeah.
There are some logistical things, if we want to do, if the commissioners want to do this, uh, there's some logistical things that have to be done on our end. Um, I've got to check and see who the budget is and what's been appropriate because there is money that's going to go out, um, at some of these costs. And it would have to be, if not, then it has to be an appropriation created with the council and that sort of thing. So it's, I've seen the contract, I've looked at the contract, I've sent a lot of questions off to them. I have sometimes difficulty following all the acronyms that they use. But he's answered a few of those, here's today, they use a, they use these acronyms left and right there.
That's, that's the state.
Yeah, it is. I didn't figure out what D F R was, but you have to, so.
So we really can't do anything till we've discussed with the sheriff if he's willing to participate?
Well, we, that discussion should happen, but it's also going to be, there's clear it's going to be a huge savings.
Well, I'm sure, I mean.
And I, I went on to that, um, for the navigators, I just went on to, to look at that navigators. And there are a lot of navigators in Delaware County that can help run this through Open Door, Meridian Health Services. The hospital has several of them, um, there are all kinds of resources that can assist the county.
I'm too, I'd like to.
I will check the budget and see what we need, if we need to do anything. Once you sign the contract, it becomes effective upon the approval of the state, as I understand it.
That is correct, yes.
Uh, and so before we sign the contract, I need to make sure that we have the things in place in the county here to, um, be able to start using that right away. Because it's, it'll be a savings of the county, we need to hit the ground running on that. I have a copy of the contract, I've looked at it and I've, a lot of my questions were answered, the ones that weren't answered that I'll email Mr. Revers. The other part of this is the, um, addiction services that I think Ms. Welke is. Because I, I know that that's important to the commissioners. And so that, that's an important component of this as well.
So, um, thank, thank you for having me. I'm Kelly Welker, I'm the Assistant Deputy Director of Addictions with the Division of Mental Health and Addiction. Um, so when I heard about this presentation that Ray was going to be doing, there might be some questions on some of the addiction providers locally in your area. So I went ahead and put together, um, some of the providers that are available in your area, the services that they provide. Um, one thing that might be very beneficial to some of the people in, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to standing still when I talk, I move a lot, so I apologize. Um, one of the services that might be very beneficial to some of the inmates upon release is called Recovery Works. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that program, but that is basically gap funding for individuals once they're released, if they have a felony. That can help pay for transportation, can help pay for, um, addiction services. If there's some gap funding time in between before their Medicaid or HIP 2.0 is eligible. Um, they will also pay for some medication, so, uh, the VivaTral shot, if they're interested in that. Recovery Works will also pay for those services. Um, so locally within your county, you have three providers, they all accept Recovery Works. They'll accept Medicaid, um, private insurance or self-pay. The other thing that is very beneficial, um, is the opioid treatment program, so the O T Ps. Now, there is not one in Delaware County, but there are roughly about four within 45 minutes to an hour drive. So there's one in Richmond, there's one in Marion, and then there are two in Indianapolis, so that is also listed on that. And the opioid treatment programs is the medication assisted treatment. So there they can either receive, uh, methadone, buprenorphine, or, or also known as Suboxone. Um, and then some of them also do have the naloxone, so the VivaTral, um, strips for that. I have also listed on the sheet just the F S A website, where you can go on our website and it pulls up a state, um, map. And you can click on your county and it'll tell you all the providers that are available in your area for that. So I wanted to keep this very brief because I know the big part was the Medicaid, but are there specific questions that you guys had about the addiction services or providers?
I'd like to hear this news.
I provided a copy of what Ms. Welker had out to Mitch, so. Mitch Council's our community corrections director, so he deals a lot with this.
Okay, well, thank you for the time.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Revers, thank you very much, it was very informative.
Should we have them get into the contact with the sheriff to provide some of the information for him?
That probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Having meet with him.
Yeah.
Sit down.
Yeah, yeah, if you could, uh, our sheriff is Sheriff Ray Dudley. If you could contact him and, uh, give him some of this information because, uh, we really want him on board. Very long with us on this, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll report back to the next commissioner's meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Revers. Uh, next we'll move on to contracts and agreements for approval. We have an agreement for employment of a Delaware County attorney.
I have submitted the, the contract to you. Once again, I appreciate the confidence and, uh, opportunity to work with you guys. And I look forward to 2018.
I make a motion we approve the agreement.
Have a motion of second to approve the agreement. Steve, can you follow up please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have, uh, agreement with Triad Associates, uh, general service agreement, Angie.
Morning Commissioners, um, this is, um, just another re- annual renewal for not exceed amount of $15,000. His hourly rate has not changed, um, so we, we just use it as on-call service, basically.
I looked at this agreement and I did, it's pretty much the same as we, the commissioners approved in the past.
I make a motion we approve the Triad agreement.
Second.
Motion of second, Steve, can you follow up please?
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have United Consulting Professional Service Agreement.
This is a similar agreement, um, this is like just an on-call only as needed. And it has the hourly, hourly rates listed there in the agreement.
So I've looked at this agreement, it seems to be appropriate, similar to what we, what the commissioners have approved in the past.
What's the price of this one?
It's just if we need it, it's, it's hourly, there's not a cap on it.
Okay, there's no cap, okay.
I'll make a motion we approve the United agreement.
Second.
Motion of second for approval, Steve, can you follow up please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have American Structure Point Professional Service Agreement.
This is for, um, this brought to our attention by residents in, in Carrington, subdivision of some traffic accidents. And then looking into it further, we realized there were several accidents also at Moore Road and we only have a deal. So this agreement is to have an injury firm evaluate, provide us some alternatives to help improve the safety at the intersections of Wheeling and Moore and Wheeling and Carrington Boulevard. And once they present those op, those options with some schematic drawings, then we would need to enter into a supplemental perpful design to go out to bed. And this is for not exceed for $18,000.
So this is a bigger scope than what these folks, that we just talked about, want to.
All right, this one is for a specific project?
This is specific, yes.
And was the city, would they agree then first, that's for that one, Moore Road?
We could look into it maybe, in our local agreement because, um.
Is it just a corner of that?
Moore, Moore Road is ours, we could see the funding, but Wheeling is that section at Moore is the city's responsibility. So, um, maybe depending on the events, that's something we can look into.
I would like to move forward with it, I'll make a motion we approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
Have a motion of second, Steve, can you go over please?
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have amendment number one for American Structure Point.
This is for the Tiger Drive, uh, Bridge Project, um, due to some revisions for the multi-use path. Um, we need to make some changes in the design, but overall, this is actually a reduction to the contract. Um, no one requested a public meeting or hearing, so overall, we've reduced the contract by $9,740.
I'll make a motion we approve the amendment number one.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Steve, can you follow up please?
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have local roads and, uh, bridge matching agreement.
Yes, um, we are fortunate to be awarded, it, um, some more money this year. It's for the 50/50 grant, we were awarded $662,880 for one bridge project and three major road projects. This is just a boilerplate N dot contract, so they will match our projects.
You looked at this one, John?
Yes, I have and, and it seems appropriate for that option.
I'll make a motion, uh, we approve this local road and bridge matching grant agreement.
Second.
Have a motion of second, Steve, can you follow up please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next we have a supplement agreement number one for S J C A.
This is my last one, I'm going to, that's our. Um, this was an unexpected supplemental, um, we are rehabbing the bridge in the town of Albany. Um, it's on Water Street over Hathaway Creek. And because we're replacing the railing, the U S Army Corps has deemed it kind of historical, which N dot does not consider this a select or non-select bridge, so we were surprised. So with us replacing it, they want us to do historical documentation, this is our requirement. So, um, this is, um, for not to exceed, uh, 14,500.
We didn't think we'd have to spend that much on it.
No.
But it does need it, Mr. Henry, right? But it does need it, Mr. Henry, right?
Yeah.
It's a nice little bridge over by the park, and looking pretty bad, I'll move that we adopt this.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, Steve, can you follow up, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move on down to Department Heads and Elected Officials. John, do you want to go ahead and do the extension agreement?
I do, I do. We've been negotiating with the UAW, and the contract for the Jailer Sheriff's Department in 911 expires September 31st. UAW had issues, and we need to extend the agreement until at least January 31st, so I presented to you a signed document that for the extension, if you see to accept it and extend the agreement, so we can negotiate.
I'll make a motion we approve the extension agreement.
Second.
I have a motion of second, Steve, can you call it, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
The other thing is, I have been contacted about the county's participation in some litigation involving the opioid crisis and epidemic. We have two attorneys here that can answer whatever questions you have, I've sent you a great deal of material. There is a lawsuit presently pending, I think it's in the Northern District of Ohio, for a lot of communities and counties across the country, they consolidate them under the Mass tort act of Congress, they consolidate up there. In Ohio, there are law firms that are representing communities in Indiana, there's law firms that are national in scope that are representing other communities, so we have, we've been approached by, at least I've been approached by, the law firm Connaught Millard for services rendered to represent this county along with others. I think they have a lot of other communities.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We have, so we represent Indiana, this Marion County, Lake County, Bloomington, Redding County, Newcastle, we have a handful of others there in the pipeline.
Is the City of Muncie also part of this?
The City of Muncie has filed a lawsuit, they went with a firm that's not Indiana.
They went with a national firm out of New York, or?
They went with a firm out of Florida, who's also working over Wisconsin.
Okay. All right. So, there's different firms doing different things, and we've been approached by a couple different ones, so...
Well, and, but this one's kind of been endorsed by the AIC, so they've done some homework, I think.
Well, this one, also, the AIC has given me other information, a little law firm too, that have reached out to us.
But they're not taking this one over the other?
The AIC really can't pick one or the other, they, they want to, they want to stay out of that, so it'll be up to the county to decide that.
I'm happy to give you an overview of the lawsuit, if you have any questions, so I think, I don't have to...
Give us some brief information about lawsuits that you don't find?
Yeah, so my name is Wes Miller, I'm a partner at Connaught Millard, I'm here with Greg Hahn, who's at Bose McKinnon, our co-counsel, and we don't have to tell you about the havoc that the opioid epidemic has been wreaking on communities across the state and the country. You're more likely to die now from opioid overdose than a car wreck in Indiana, more people died last year than all of the Vietnam from opioid addiction. And so, lawsuits are aimed at recovering the costs and trying to fix the problem going forward at a local level. There's cost for law enforcement, there's cost for child services, opioid treatment, and so the lawsuits aim at two main groups of defendants, one are the manufacturers of the drugs, and the other are the distributors of the drugs. The national names are Purdue on the manufacturing side, they're not, it's not affiliated with Purdue, the university, and none of these are Indiana companies. But basically, what the manufacturers did is for, for a long time now, opioids were restricted to a very limited use, either immediately after a surgery in a small amount, or for end-of-life care, when it doesn't matter if you get addicted to them. And the idea was, these are dangerous addictive drugs, that, we have an expert, he basically says, this is a heroin pill. We are giving people heroin pills, if you give someone 10 heroin pills, they are now hermetic. So, the manufacturers, knowing this, but wanting to increase their profit share, and knowing that chronic pain is a huge problem in the country, went about coming up with different front groups, different key opinion leaders, to indoctrinate the community that no, it's okay to use opioids for chronic pain, and the market just boomed, and then we saw the aftermath of that, which is people addicted to opioids, and once you're addicted to opioids, it's very difficult, it's very expensive to get off of them, and it's, it's dangerous, actually, it takes a professional to help you get off of them. And so, what you saw as a result of that is not just increased law enforcement costs and all those things, but you also see people who were working, got hurt on the job, go to get surgery, and now they're addicted to opioids, they're unemployed, county's not getting tax revenue, they're using social services, if the opioid isn't abused, and it just is a massive burden on people and on tax revenue. So, that's the theory, basically, against the pharmaceutical companies, and they paid huge fines to the government, who accused them of basically the same thing. On the distributor side, there are three main distributors who control most of the market or distribution of these pills, and they have duties under the controlled substances that they're put in place as the gatekeepers to try to keep these drugs under wraps and make sure that, that they weren't being distributed in a way that was going to hurt people. And so, what they, what they were required to do, and what their duty was, is to stop suspicious orders. And so, people said, well, what's a suspicious order? And for Delaware County, at the height of this, in 2012, there were 146 prescriptions for every 100 people in the county. So, that's, that's a suspicious level, I think, as the distributors turn their heads, go do a reporting they were supposed to do, let all this go under the radar. So, those, those are the two main groups, and the, we have a bunch of different theories, one is aimed at recovering the costs that the counties already expended, and one, and the other theory is abatement, they've created a nuisance in the community, and under the abatement theory, they're required to correct that nuisance. So, that may mean they would want them to pay for a treatment facility that's not 45 minutes away. They may want them to do in jail treatment, and we want them to do a lot of different things to try to fix what they caused. And so, like I said, my firm, we're only representing Indiana counties, we're Connaught Millard, we've done national, international states all over the country, my firm is litigated, and we go up against the biggest pharmaceutical companies, big corporations, government when we have to, they're experienced in that, and we'll work on a contingent contract, I can give Mr. Reagan a copy if you'd like to review it. It's a contingent contract, so there's no out-of-pocket costs from the county, and if we lose, then we absorb any expenses that we had to the lawsuit, and they are expensive lawsuits, because you have to have expensive experts and people behind the scenes working on all this stuff, so we, we believe in lawsuits, that's why we're in it, and we believe that when it comes, if there is a resolution to this lawsuit, it's probably gonna be on a big scale. And so, we want to make sure that Indiana has a voice at that table when people are coming up with a formula for how things might get divided up, and so that's why we're not representing municipalities and counties outside of the state.
Were you involved in the tobacco coalition lawsuit?
I'm sorry?
Were you involved, your company involved in the tobacco?
We had, we had a small part of tobacco.
Yeah, and that was a big chunk of money, I remember.
Yeah, and there's been some criticism of how tobacco money got used later on, but yes, it's a...
With the same principle?
It's a, it's a similar, similar issue.
I'd like to move forward myself, this has cost us a lot of money, it's cost a lot of lives, and I'd like to move forward.
And being local, I like the fact that you're Indiana-based, Bose McKinnon's got a very good name, and I'll make a motion that we adopt this.
But do you want to...
We don't, we don't have a contract.
I would prefer a contract to be sent to John.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll be honest, I didn't do my homework this week, so...
I, I spent a lot of time this weekend reading up on a lot of it, and I'd like, if you could, get something...
I would like for you to repeat the Delaware County, what was the rate that it was and it shouldn't have been?
Yeah, so in 2012, the rate of prescriptions was 146 prescriptions for every 100 people. It's gone slightly since then.
146 for every?
Hundred and fifty.
And that's not the number of pills, that's another prescription.
Yeah, you take most of them, 30 prescriptions, 60 prescriptions.
And there's, there's so much research going on, I see doctors getting now, saying, you know, we used to give out 60 pills when someone would come in and want to do something, and they're only giving 6.
Myself and Shannon, we're both law enforcement officers, so we, we sit here on it.
You're on the front lines in my house. Yeah, I can give my, John, a copy of the contract.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I just sent you a lot of contact information.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Jenny?
Yes, it was delivered to Mayor Tyler's receptionist, Yolanda Carey, who signed for it.
Okay. Thanks. Yolanda Carey signed for the letter.
Okay.
Can you also make sure that it is sent out certified mail?
I'll get it, I'll get a copy for you, Jenny, and we'll send it out certified mail.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, I see you step up there, do you have anything?
The only thing that I want to add in reference to the opioid epidemic, I can put a very, very small dollar figure to what we are referring to, and I can tell you that year-to-date, we've spent over $22,000 on Narcan, which is a drug that reverses the effects, and when you, when you overdose on opioid, you stop breathing, Narcan will then reverse those effects and allow you to start breathing. So, that is EMS alone, that doesn't include what the health department spent on it, and their programs, and their state grants, and those types of things, so just, just through what we have delivered through 911 Emergency Ambulance Service this, this year alone, to date, was over $22,000, and that doesn't look to slow down anytime soon.
And there's also sometimes that just one dose doesn't do it.
Some of the drugs that we are seeing, the fentanyl, and more so these days, the carfentil, you're talking about dosing a patient as many as, as four times. We've worked with our medical director, and we're setting limits to what Narcan doses are being given, to the point that they're not necessarily working, so you're, you're still not breathing, so we've moved to an aggressive intubation protocol, and that way, the patients that we're seeing are having rapid ALS intervention immediately, of course, all of our ambulances are paramedic ambulances, so they have those capabilities right there in front of them. As you all know, Narcan can be delivered by anybody in the public, by a family member, and if it doesn't work with the first dose, then they need rapid intervention with, with an advanced airway, so that's what, that's what we're doing.
Thanks, Jason. Does anybody else have anything? We'll move to questions, comments from the public. I'll enter a motion to recess.
Just a minute, you have to pay claims.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, we're gonna make sure they pay the bills.
Okay, well, this payment of claims is $1,209,309.83. Steve's got motion in a second, can you follow up?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Now, we'll move on to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
I have a motion of second, Steve, can you call it, please?
Mr. Henry, yes. Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
On recess.